Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the February 11th, 2021 meeting of the Downtown Parking Committee. Glad you're with us, and if we could have the roll call, please.
Barbara Silver. Here. Ruben Zarate.
Here.
Ed France.
Here.
Matt Labrie.
Here.
Andrew Newkirk.
Here.
John Pratt is excused. And Chair Penner.
Here.
Thank you.
We get Ed France.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Again, thank you all for joining us this morning for the Downtown Parking Committee. Got a lot of stuff to cover today, a lot of numbers to cover today, so we're looking forward to hearing about that. But more importantly, we have a ceremonial item first, and this is the swearing in of current DPC member, a longtime standing DPC member, former chair of the Downtown Parking Committee. I'll let staff take it from there.
Okay, I think, Mindy, you're gonna come in and administrate the swearing in? And I think, Matt, do you have, or Mr. Labrie, you have something to read, or is that correct, Mindy?
Yes, if he could read that for us, that'll be his oath.
I will. So I, Matt Labrie, do solemnly swear to affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and of the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a member of the Downtown Parking Committee of the City of Santa Barbara, California, according to the best of my abilities.
Excellent, thank you very much, Committee Member Labrie, and welcome to your second term.
Thank you.
Or is it the fifth?
I don't think it's more than a second term, I believe, Mr. Dayton. Thank you, Mr. Labrie, for that. We welcome you back, or continuation with welcome and open arms, so thank you for your continued support of our City of Santa Barbara through your involvement with many organizations, but more importantly at this time, the Downtown Parking Committee, thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda to announce?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Public Comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public who was to comment on an item in the jurisdiction of the Downtown Parking Committee, but not currently on today's agenda. If you do so, Ms. Clark will explain to you how to do the Public Comment.
Okay, so for any members of the public who are in attendance, either now or throughout the meeting when we do call for Public Comment, if you're interested in making a public comment, please use the Raise Lower Your Hand button, which is located on the control panel, you can see it's a little hand-shaped graphic with the green arrow in order to indicate that you want to make public comment. When it's your turn, if you've done that, we'll go ahead and call on you, you can unmute yourself, and you'll be able to speak.
Do we have any public comment?
At this time, I do not see any public comment, no.
Okay. Then we'll close public comment, excuse me, close public comment for item number five, and we'll move to item number six, the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of January 14th, 2021. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of the January 14th minutes.
Thank you, first, from Mr. Newkirk.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. France. Do we have any discussion regarding the item? Seeing none, I'll call for the question.
Committee Member Silver. Aye. Zarate.
Aye.
France.
Aye.
Labrie.
Aye.
Newkirk.
Yes.
And Chair Penner.
Aye.
Thank you. All before us, we'll move to Agenda Item Seven, an important item before us, and a big change in this type of discussion that we've had in past years, so we appreciate staff and all the work they put into this today, so. Mr. Dayton.
So, Mr. Chair, Committee Members, this, we have been bringing the budget to you on a monthly basis to review how that's going. This item that Ms. Clark is going to review with us is a little bit different, a little bit more distinguished than those check-ins, what this is actually a recommendation coming up to City Council, so we're moving to City Council and getting ready to do our two-year budget coming up, so what Ms. Clark will be talking about is really what our plans are for the next two years, and you'll be able to see much of what we've been talking about of how we right the ship based on the effects of the pandemic on our operations and revenues, so Ms. Clark, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton, good morning, Chair Penner and Committee Members. As Mr. Dayton said, today we'll be going through not only where we're projecting to finish out FY '21, as well as a quick look at how we did in January, we're also going to be looking ahead to fiscal year '22 and '23, and our proposed budget for those years. So to start with just a broad overview of where we're standing right now, and what we're looking at, we ended FY 2020, of course, after the last three months or so, we were impacted by the COVID-related shutdown, having used about $1.5 million of reserves to cover both our capital program and our operations. In FY 2021, with the continued closures, we are expecting at this point to use approximately $2.8 million in reserves to fund operations and capital. For FY 2022, we are expecting to see some amount of recovery of the economy, and hopefully the pandemic will continue to ease, and we'll have more and more businesses that are able to reopen, and really sort of to get the economy back on track at that point. We are still expecting that we will run a small deficit, about $609,000 that year, in order to fund our operations, and then FY 2023, we do expect to be back in the black to the tune of about $445,000 that we would hopefully be able to add to reserves, provided again that things remain on track in terms of control of the virus and the economic recovery that's going to follow. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, you know, we've talked about this at pretty much every meeting that we've had. The impacts that we have felt of the pandemic have been very serious and very severe. We've seen overall about a 48% decrease in lot occupancy, and that's during the times when we've been able to be open, of course, we had the hard closure, you know, starting about this time last year. And then accompanying that, we see also a 48% decrease in permit subscriptions, so we've had quite a lot of cancellations as workers have moved remote, people are working from home now, offices aren't open. Additionally, another major source of income for us is the real property that we lease out to different tenants. Some of those tenants, particularly the Metropolitan Theater, the movie theater that's adjacent to La Barra Garage, which has, was only able to open, I think, for a few months, and even then only at a very limited capacity. They have not been able to pay their rent, we have another tenant at the REA Building who has not been able to get their business open this year because of the pandemic. And so we're working on renegotiating those leases and negotiating repayment for that back rent, but at this point, obviously, that's a major hit to our income there. Additionally, throughout the year, at different times, different resident parking restrictions have been suspended, so we haven't seen the same volume of permit requests that we would normally receive, particularly up around City College, which is our largest permit parking area, because City College has been mostly virtual throughout the year, the only very limited number of classes that are in-person on campus, that area has not been enforced for permanent parking, so we haven't issued the permits that we would normally issue there, so those are just some of the impacts that we're facing that are really causing our revenues to decline. Next slide, please. So let's see what this looks like for January this past month, obviously, we were still in more of the hard shutdown. We just reopened, I believe, on the 25th, outdoor dining was able to resume. So for us, that's looked like revenues of only about $308,000, whereas this time last year, we were at $787,000. Our expenditures were $567,000, so overall, we're looking at net use of reserves of about $258,000 for the month of January. So we go to the next slide, you can see this chart that we've been following each month, that red line is the main line that you want to take a look at, that's our net operating budget, so the goal is to have that line tilting upwards toward that $0, so that we can be breaking even. Again, you can see we got pretty close in October, November, but then unfortunately with the new stay-at-home order that came along in December, that dropped back down. You can see it did tick up a bit again in January, and we do expect a bit more recovery in February now that outdoor dining has returned, and we are keeping the lots open later on the weekends to accommodate that demand. Next slide, please. So now we're going to move into the budget for, oh, excuse me, I lost my, lost my screen here. We are going to move into the budget for, again, the projections for the end of FY '21, as well as FY '22 and FY '23. I'm just going to take you through some of these high points, so the first one, Megan, if you can just hit after there, so PBIA, of course, PBIA is largely dependent on the amount of trade that the businesses in town are doing. In a normal year, we bring in about $1 million for FY '21, however, we're only projecting that we're going to receive about half of that, so about $581,000 this year, and again, that's due to these businesses being closed, and obviously, sales dropping very significantly under where they would normally be, as well as the number of businesses that are just gone out of business. We do expect some recovery in FY '22, we're expecting to be at about 75% of normal, and then in FY '23, we're expecting some continued recovery, we don't expect that we'll be back to normal at that point, there's there are going to be a lot of vacancies that are going to need to be filled, and I'm sure many other factors that will affect that, but at this point, you're budgeting to receive about $900,000 in FY '23. So if we move on to hourly revenue. Of course, this is our biggest source of revenue, in a normal year, we would have budgeted about $5.2 million for that hourly revenue, this year, we're only expecting to receive about $1.6 million, so a big hit to hourly revenue. We do expect it to start to climb back for FY '22, and you're going to notice something different starting in FY '22, which is that our bill revenue, which is the line below that, Megan, if you can just highlight that, is jumping way up, so we're budgeting that at $411,000, and that's because in FY '22, we are expecting to transition into the automated lot operation model with the LPR technology. And what that will mean with a credit card-only payment system is that people who aren't able to pay with their credit card on exit are going to receive a bill for that, so at this point, we're budgeting about 10% of our revenue for, from the gates would move over to to build revenue, so you'll see that go way up, so you're going to need to look at that in tandem with the hourly revenue, to get a picture overall for where we're expecting to end the year. So FY '23, we expect credit card adoption to continue to climb, and also the economic recovery to continue, so we're budgeting this based on about being still about 10% under where we would normally be for hourly parking demand, but again, we will have brought online that extra revenue that we do expect to realize using the LPR system from being able to operate overnight and from being able to prevent people from abusing the free period. So if you just want to move down. So the next one, monthly parking and commuter parking, permit parking demand, like I mentioned before, is way down, in a normal year, we'd be bringing in about $1.2 million in monthly parking and about $400,000 in commuter parking, this year, we're only expecting to bring in about $800,000 in monthly parking and about $179,000 in commuter parking. We expect this to recover more slowly than our hourly revenues, because we do expect, you know, you'll hear a lot of prognostication about this, that there will be a larger shift away from from necessarily businesses having in-person office space and more towards a remote work model for the long term. So we expect that to climb back a little bit more slowly, so we're budgeting about $882,000 for FY '22 and $970 for FY '23 for monthly, and then up to $196,000 and $216,000 for FY '23 in commuter parking, so about a 10% annual recovery. Go ahead, the next one. So I mentioned before, our revenue from property leases is much lower than where we would expect it to be. Normally, we would be owed about $503,000, this year, we're only expecting to receive about $133,000 of that, so that's a big hit to us. We do expect that to recover a bit in FY '22, as our tenants are able to reopen and begin making repayment on that, and by FY '23, we do expect that we'll be receiving the full amount of that lease revenue. And so the last one that I want to highlight quickly is the general fund, what we call pass-throughs, so this is an appropriation that we get from the general fund, the support that we get from the general fund for some of our programmatic activities. You can see for FY '21 that we are expecting to get the full amount, it's actually a little bit over what we had originally budgeted, because I believe we have some additional general fund support that was added for crossing guards, but when you move into FY '22 and FY '23, that's going to go up a bit, and that's because we are requesting an additional appropriation over what we usually get for the ambassador program. If you recall, the ambassador program was originally seeded with $150,000 annually in general funding, and then we were able to supplement that for a few years with funds from a tobacco cessation grant that we received from the state, and that enabled us to basically double our operations of that program. Now that those funds have run out, our spending on that program this year has dropped, but next year, in order to restore that service level up to what it was before, especially again with the recovery that we expect to see or hope to see downtown, we do want to bring that program up to previously funded levels, so we are asking for an additional appropriation there. So in total, in a normal year, again, we would be expecting a $4.2 million, excuse me, $9.4 million in annual revenue, this year, we're only expecting to get about $4.3, expect that to recover in FY '22 up to $7.4 and then to $8.6 in FY '23. So we can go ahead and move on to the next slide, we'll discuss our expenditures. So the big one that you're going to notice a change on here is hourly salaries and benefits. Prior to the pandemic, under our normal operating model, we were spending about $1.7, $1.8 million a year on hourly salaries, the largest portion of that, of course, is the lot operators, the kiosk staff out in the lots, but that also includes our office and our maintenance, hourly staff. For FY '21, we'll see a big reduction there, of course, you know, unfortunately, this is because we haven't been able to be open, and we've been only operating limited hours to accommodate our reduced demand, so we're only looking to set out $695,000 on that for this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, that is going to go up a bit, but it's not going to go all the way back up to where we were before, and of course, that's because we're moving to this automated lot operations model, so this number here accounts for the transition period, where we'll still be staffing the kiosks with the LPR in place to get our customers used to the new system, to get ourselves used to the new system, before moving to the fully automated, quote-unquote, lot monitor model, where we just have a small handful of staff who are out responding to customer needs as they arise. So as we move to FY '23, you actually see that number drop a little bit, as we're expecting to spend the full year there in the fully automated staffing model. So we're going to move down now to, I believe, parking support and maintenance, so this is a number that contains all of our service supplies and services costs, so, you know, what we spend on purchasing things, basically, you know, physical equipment, as well as service contracts, like plumbing, electrical, and, you know, the big one here, that's going to be making a difference, is if you look at FY '22 and FY '23, you'll see that number go up, and that's because that's going to include a portion of the plaza maintenance contract, which we sort of share, like the janitorial services contract covers both the plaza and the downtown parking operations, so in the downtown parking lot, so we've moved that, as well as some of the landscaping costs for our lots into this line, where previously it was paid out of, I believe, capital, our capital budget, so when you see this go up, it's not really a net increase, we are expecting to spend a bit more, because we've really been pinching pennies this past year, and that's not going to be sustainable for the long term, but where you're seeing this increase, the majority of that is is work that we funded this past year out of the capital budget that's being moved up into the operating budget. So the next one that you're going to see a big change on is these credit card fees. You know, in a normal year, we budgeted about $195,000 for credit card fees. This year, we're seeing a big savings there, again, unfortunately, it's because that demand has been so low, and we've had so few transactions, so we're only expecting to spend about $65,000 this year on credit card fees, but then when we move into FY '22 and FY '23, where we're moving to this credit card-only automated model, that's going to go up quite a bit, and that fee's also going to go up, because it's including some additional charges, service charges, that we are going to be experiencing that kind of come with our ski data upgrades, we're going to a new one of our credit card processors are new processors, so there's some new fees there. So now we're going to jump down to plaza support and maintenance. So this is another one where you're going to see a bit of a change, in past years, this was the DO maintenance contract, where the city, the general fund gave us about half of the cost, and downtown parking kicked in the other half, and we would we would pay that money out to the downtown organization, to downtown Santa Barbara, for them to pay for the maintenance contracts for the downtown plaza and marketing and promotional work in the downtown area. So we are continuing to support their work in marketing and maintenance, so we still are passing through that general fund support to downtown Santa Barbara for our marketing contract, but then downtown parking has taken on the management of those plaza maintenance contracts, so that's why you see this number change a bit. Again, we've moved some funds that were paid this past year out of some different line items and out of the capital budget into into this line item, and we've also included in this line item now the cost of the hourly maintenance workers that are used to support the downtown plaza, so we're going to start tracking that a little bit more closely moving forward. And then finally, down to the next one, the crossing guards, original budget for FY '21, the ceiling was $0, that's because, again, it was a program that was added a bit later, but this year, FY '21, we spent much less than we would normally expect to spend, obviously, the schools have been closed, so they are reopening now, the post school district and Peabody School have been open for a little bit, so we have been staffing those, and then Santa Barbara Unified is hoping to be able to reopen either later this month or month or early in March. So if we get there, then that'll come back up again, but at this point, we're on track to spend much less than we normally would, that'll go back to the normal amount for FY '22 and '23. And again, that is supported half from the general fund, and then half of that is actually paid by the school districts to us, so we bill them for that service. And then finally, on to the ambassadors, as I discussed, we're spending a bit less this year than we've spent in prior years, trying to keep the budget down, because again, those tobacco cessation grant funds have expired, and additionally, with the reduced activity downtown, we just don't have quite as much need to be staffing, but we do expect to ramp the program back up to normal levels in FY '22 and '23 with that additional general fund support. So overall, looking at the bottom line for FY '21, in a normal year, we'd expect to be spending about $3.4 million, or excuse me, $9.4 million on operating our program. For FY '21, you know, fortunately, we've been able to be very careful and to adjust our operations carefully to realize as much savings as we can. We're expecting to finish the year, having spent about $6.9 million, and then for FY '22 and '23, that's going to come back up closer to normal at $7.7 and then $7.9, so $8 million in annual expenditures. So where does that leave us? Let's go to the next slide. So overall, when we're looking at the operating budget for FY '21, we are looking at a net loss of about $2.6 million from, for operations alone, and then FY '22, that's going to recover quite a bit, so $354,000. Then we'll move over to FY '23, and then hopefully be back in the black at that point, it's about $400, or excuse me, $698,000 net. So next slide. So in the bottom line for our reserves, once we factor in the additional expenditures on capital, and as we discussed before, our capital budget, we are going to keep at the bare minimum for the next couple of years, so really only critical maintenance and safety projects, we're going to be paying for this past year. That was a bit higher, we had some rollover, and we also had, of course, the ski data upgrades and the LPR system that we bought. So bottom line is, for FY '21, we're projecting that we will use about $3.8 million in reserves, which will leave us with about $2 million balance at the end of the year. And then FY '22, that's going to shrink a bit, so we're going to use an additional $608,000 in reserves, which will leave us with about $1.4 million total in reserves at the end of the year, and then hopefully start to rebuild that a bit in FY '23 with the addition of about $444,000 in reserves, bringing us up to about $1.8 million. So I think this is my last slide, if anybody has any questions.
And, Mr. Chair, just before you go to questions, I just want to appreciate Ms. Clark and all the work she does, you may recall that we put her in this position to be at the helm of the programmatic approach and the budget, and she just continues to do an amazing job in a, at a time when we're all under a lot of stress, and I just appreciate the the accuracy and the sophistication with what she's doing in her work, so thank you very much, Ms. Clark.
And if I could add on to that, the work that Sarah does working with Roy Forni, our operations supervisor, and his six parking coordinators, I mean, the task is just unbelievably complicated, trying to balance schedules for staff that have to be made two weeks in advance. First, you have a shutdown in March, then you have a reopening in June, and then another shutdown in December, then a reopening in January, and what do you do about keeping the folks on the books, and then scheduling them, and then telling them, no, now you're on, now you're off, and then also being able to balance the occupancy numbers in the lots, to see if they justify keeping the staff a little bit later to try to collect the revenue. It's been a Herculean effort, and just really, really appreciate everybody's efforts on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Garza, Mr. Dayton, for those comments, and on behalf of the board, the committee, we echo those comments, too, we recognize the level of extra work and action that it's taken for all the staff, Ms. Clark, and all of you, Mr. Garza, Mr. Forni, Dion, everyone involved with parking, to help us get through this very difficult time, I appreciate everybody who's done that, the extra heavy lifting, and we appreciate it, thank you, Ms. Clark, for an excellent presentation of all the good news you provided for us, and there is some good news in there, because I think, although we were weathering a very significant storm, you are showing us a report over the horizon that looks a little better than what we've just endured, so we thank you for providing that information. I do just have a couple of questions and comments before opening up to the committee for questions and comments. Comment first, I just want to recognize that between the not having the waterfront downtown shuttle and the changes in being able, unfortunately, having to deal with staff, as far as hourly operations staff, I did see that's about a $2 million reduction in costs that we were able to do, so that made a big difference in at least keeping us where we are, so, again, good work on that. I wanted to ask a question, just because I couldn't remember, credit card fees. I think recently, in the last year, we had maybe a negotiation on that, can someone just enlighten us on where that landed, on where we expect our rate to be on credit card fees?
Sure, we did, the city renegotiated its fees with the credit card provider, so the overall rate should drop, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact rate off the top of my head, I think it's like a tiered structure, so I don't have the exact details on that, but it should have come in, if this was a normal year, it should have come in lower than where we would have been in previous years. It's very hard to benchmark right now where that's going to come in, just because nothing was normal this year. But overall, that But, but overall that, uh, that fee should go down. So, you know, we will be however introducing some new fees again that we weren't previously paying, uh, for credit card processing. And, you know, as we move to mobile payment, there are additional fees there as well.
Okay. So that, is that mobile pay, that line up in the credit card fees? Is that line up on another item, another line item in the, in the budget?
That was factored into the credit card fees.
Okay. All right. So we've had some savings by negotiating a better rate. But we're going to have some additional costs, but overall we're, we're staying pretty, pretty good there. Okay. Another, another, um, question, sort of, sort of budget related and it, all our budget kind of turns into operation related and, um, we, you mentioned the commuter parking and I don't know if there's a way to go back to the revenue slide. That's, uh, you can just go to the whatever shows it up first, even though it'll have a red line around a different box. One more, or you have to go all the way up?
Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Okay, that's good. We see obviously, uh, you mentioned on commuter parking, yeah, we probably don't see, um, levels back to where we are. Do we, um, and there's a possible reuse of one of our commuter parking lots. Sort of what's, what, what do we see dictating those commuter parking needs? Where do we see that, where we see those funds? Are they going to be still in separate lots? Has there been any thought about that?
So, yeah, um, you know, monthly and commuter parking together, again, we're not expecting to see those recover quite as quickly, uh, as the hourly revenue. Just because of what may end up being longer term patterns in, uh, in commuting and in office space and in remote work. So for the commuter lots, you know, like you said, there is, uh, sort of the pending loss of those two, uh, parking lots. The Cota commuter lot, of course, to the new police station. And then the Creo parking lot, uh, to the proposed, uh, affordable housing project that would be going in there. So at this point, those two, uh, those changes haven't been factored into the next two years budgets. I'm not exactly sure when those projects are going to be actually breaking ground and we're going to have to move people out of there. Right now in my sort of longer term projections, I'm putting those out towards FY24 when we start to see that change. And what that change is going to look like is, um, less an overall loss of revenue and more just that revenue moving up into the monthly parking line. Because we're going to be taking those parkers and relocating them into our, uh, monthly parking lots where we have capacity, uh, and grandfathering in their existing rates. So, um, overall, we're not looking to see, uh, a net change there, but, uh, we are kind of where it is, where we're receiving the money is going to change. So, you know, at this point, like I said, we aren't exactly sure when those projects will start. It's possible when we come back and revisit, uh, mid-cycle FY22 or FY23, that may end up, we may end up having to make those changes a bit earlier. But at this point, I'm just budgeting for the lots to be there, uh, through these two years.
Thank you. And again, that, and I, I imagine, um, having the LPR system helps us manage that movement of our commuter parking needs into these lots and understanding and we can work through those availability of lots. So I, I just kind of wanted to think about where is that hitting? How far out is this commuter lot number going, you know, with, with, you know, future changes? So, um, thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, I'm going to hold off on my other questions, let, uh, other people of the committee, if they have questions or comments of staff right now, uh, please go ahead and turn on your camera. Mr. Newkirk.
Thanks, Tripper, and thanks, Sarah, for kind of walking through some of the highlights. So that answered a lot of like cap questions I had, looking at the, the table in the packet. You know, one of, I guess the one thing that jumps out to me is, you know, the kind of the lag in, um, or the kind of continuation post pandemic of us dipping it significantly into reserves. And so like, kind of when we get out of this, you know, our reserves are going to be a fraction of what they were, you know, a year ago. Is there any like, yeah, and essentially the reserves have worked in the way that they're designed to work. You know, we've had this kind of catastrophic impact to our budget. Is, is there any kind of like, what's, is, is there any discussion about long-term how to really ramp up the reserves again? Cause you know, even when we look at, you know, fiscal 23, you know, assuming in addition of, you know, a little under half a million to reserves. You know, it's not anywhere close to what we've been burning through. So like, kind of, is there any thought, I know it's getting even beyond kind of 20, fiscal 23, but just curious if there's kind of been any discussions about how we get back to a better place with reserves? So that if something like this happens again, we'll be able to withstand it potentially.
Uh, yes. So, uh, Mr. Chair and Committee Member Newkirk, excellent question and the answer is emphatical, yes, emphatical, yes. We, we've been thinking about this and as, as you might remember, and for the new members prior to the pandemic, this was an issue. So the pandemic has been an accelerant of the problem, but the problem existed prior to the pandemic in that our revenues were, um, meeting our expenses rather than throwing off what we're used to. We were used to in the past, the, you know, Mr. Penner and Mr. Labrie. They, they will remember days when we were throwing off a million to even a million and a three quarters of dollars a year into the reserve fund. And then that was specifically used for capital and maintenance efforts. For example, we had two stairwells go down, uh, which cost a million dollars each. You know, that's going to happen and that's, that's where we need to be at. So at the same time, we're trying to, uh, be flexible and pivot for this pandemic. We are also thinking about how we right the ship in terms of getting back to throwing off the cash. So, um, of course, the automation is a big part of that strategy. And, um, and so when we get on the other side of this thing, we think we're in a position to, to throw off cash into that reserve. But we are also going to have to look at other efforts as a committee and as a city to continue that. And we'll know better when we're, you know, done with the pandemic and we have some, um, type of normal operations. And we know what normal operations actually look like because there's many, many, uh, office leases downtown that are, are being vacated. And there's a lot of people who just aren't coming downtown to work, uh, anymore. We, we have big questions marks if they will return. So yes, we're, we're, you know, the pandemic was an accelerant of the problem that already existed. And yes, we're keeping the eye on the ball. Well, um, in the next item, we'll be talking a little bit more about what that looks like in terms of riding the ship.
Thanks.
Any members, other members of the committee with questions or comments on the, uh, on the budget? Mr. France. I'm sorry, Mr. France. I thought I, did you get that or did he not want to speak?
Uh, he was muted, so. You're muted, Sarah.
We can't hear you.
I've unmuted you.
I, thank you. Um, I have to say, I've had this problem before where it will not let me unmute. It's so silly. Anyway, apologies. Major kudos to Sarah and Victor and Rob and the team in preparing this budget and in navigating through this storm so far. I think that, um, over the last couple of years, I've just noticed in every case where we've needed to right the ship by managing expenses, uh, very thoughtfully, almost like magically, you all have been able to kind of find solutions. Um, and I think that, uh, yeah, the, especially kind of going into the year, knowing that we're going into the next two years, knowing the situation that we're in. I think that from a budgeting and from a policy standpoint, uh, you all have done the, the really hard work to find opportunities to save on the expense side. And just to, uh, to Chair, to, to Committee Member Newkirk's point, um, building the reserves, uh, and, uh, finding ways in the upcoming budgets to increase income to do that. Uh, is hopefully a policy shift that we as the committee can support, uh, our staff to provide more, um, opportunity for you all to, to work your magic, to, to help, uh, us be in a position where we're rebuilding reserves again. Because downtown parking's ability to support the downtown and the plazas and the sales and all that, uh, it really comes down to us. There's no, uh, there's no, no more state funds available for projects, be it our own garages or anything positive that comes up. We might be the source of at least local matching in some cases, if there are state or other funds. So I just want to really appreciate how you all have navigated and, uh, all of this committee in thinking about the years ahead. Really, um, arming, uh, our staff to be able to do your great work to get our system back, um, back in the, in the black.
Thank you, Mr. France. Why don't we take this opportunity, uh, to open public comment? And then, uh, if there's any other comments or questions by, uh, the committee at that point, we can take those. But Sarah, will you open up public comment, please?
Sure. So if any member of the public wishes to speak, go ahead, use the raise your hand button. And I'm not seeing anybody.
All right. Thank you. We'll close public comment on that item. Well, I just, uh, to, I mean, I, my understanding, um, Ms. Clark is, this is the budget that is being set forth to, subject to our questions or comments, we are here to make a recommendation to move this, uh, budget forward to the next step. Is that our, us, Mr. Dayton, if there's anything else he's asking of us to do here?
Sarah?
I believe that you're just receiving the update, uh, that I think that you can make the recommendation that this, uh, or, or express your support for, uh, the budget as proposed. And then yes, the next step would be, um, we submit it to the city administrator and then it goes on to council.
Right. Okay. Well, I, I, I don't have any other, uh, significant comments or concerns except for to follow on to Mr. Newkirk. My wrap-up comment was going to be, you know, we have to, we have to deal with what we're dealing with now and that's what we're, we've got and we're doing what we can. And Mr. Dayton talks about riding the ship and continuing on. And so we will have some, some, over the next, I'm sure, couple of years as we settle into the, a new normal, figure out next steps. And so that'll be an important thing for us to, uh, get to and how do we get those reserves back up? Because, uh, I think we all anticipated that these reserves were going to be used for something of a physical nature. Something in a garage that needed to be repaired or, uh, you know, God forbid, an earthquake and we lose a garage and, and things of that nature. So I think that's what we all anticipated. I don't think any of us ever thought we'd be looking at an economic, uh, hit like this to our, our parking system. So, um, we're glad we had it. It's kept us afloat. But we are going to have to take a serious look at how we get back to a reserve that does prepare for those other, other potential catastrophes other than just economics. So, um, we thank you for the report. If I'm understanding correctly, do we need a, a roll call vote for a recommendation?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay. So if I can entertain a motion from somebody on the committee?
Chairpin, I'd like to make a motion before I do have, have one more comment, uh, a little bit tongue in cheek. But, um, when, when the hourly parking rate, uh, was set, uh, however many years ago last, I know it went, uh, down to 75 minutes from 90. But I think, uh, in future, we should think about the flexibility of that rate similarly to a cup of coffee on state. And maybe it should be indexed as such, because I think we artificially set rates that don't change, uh, with inflation or pricing. And we get stuck with the end result of that. So I'm, I'm suggesting the, the cup of coffee index for our hourly, uh, pricing rate. And with that semi joke, I will, uh, make a motion, uh, that the downtown parking, uh, committee, uh, supports moving forward the fiscal year 22, 23 budget and parking operation.
We have a motion. First, do we have a second?
Go ahead, Andy.
I, I said, sorry, Chairpin, I had a quick question. Our, is what, is the council considering the fiscal 22 and 23 budgets at the same time? Is it a two-year?
We have a two-year budget with a mid-year review.
Okay, then, yeah, then, okay, I will, uh, second that motion from, um, Member France.
Well, thank you. We have a first and a second. Any discussion regarding the motion? Seeing none, we'll have the roll call vote, please.
Hey, as I read your name, if you could turn on your camera and audio as you vote. Barbara Silver. Barbara Silver. Ruben Zarate. Ed France.
I support.
Matt Labrie.
Yes.
Mr. Newkirk.
Yes.
And Barbara Silver. And Chair Pinner.
I vote aye. Ms. Silver may be having some technical difficulties in clicking in, but I do believe that is a four affirmative votes. And seeing that then the motion would carry, I would probably note her as an extension if that's the right procedure when we have a technical issue like that.
She could also, um, uh, put that in the chat just to affirm that you believe that, uh, that that happened and we'll continue to work on those technical issues.
Okay, but we did have, uh, I think four yeses, so that does carry the, carry the, the motion, so thank you. And thank you again, staff. We can't thank you enough. We've done it a few times and we'd like to do it 10 times more if we could, but we need to move on to the next.
Am I, am I finally unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I kept getting a message saying that I've been muted by the organizer. Stop. And I did have a question at the very beginning of the discussion and I haven't been able to get in, so. I will, I will vote yes after I asked my question, which was something that Trey raised right at the beginning. And that was with the shuttle, which you skipped over and it doesn't look like it's going to return. So let me ask about that. What, what is the plan for that?
Uh, that's a great, great question, um, Committee Member Silver. So we'll have to, so there's a couple of things that are happening with the, uh, with the plaza. Right now it's closed on the, under the emergency order, uh, by city council. We're going to be revisiting the emergency order, uh, soon and staff is going to recommend extending the emergency order, which actually has a sunset in March. Uh, so that's a signal that we're not, uh, out of the woods in terms of the pandemic. So State Street will remain closed and as long as it does, the shuttle could not be there. And then, uh, we are, uh, anticipating that the council will also figure out a way to keep State Street closed until a revitalization project will, um, ha- occurs. And we're going to talk about that as a, a future item on this agenda. But, uh, if State Street, uh, gets redesigned, I think that's when the question Committee Silver will come about is how does a shuttle, how does a, uh, a shuttle, uh, perform or is, is or is not accommodated in a redesigned State Street? I think that'll be the question. Uh, and then, um, and then if the answer is yes, I think the next question will be depending upon our budget is how do you fund that shuttle? The shuttle costs, uh, were well over a, a million. budget, is how do you fund that shuttle? The shuttle costs were well over a million dollars. We were partnering with the waterfront department on pain. They think they were at 18 or 20% of that cost. And so given our current budget and where it's headed, we may, we may or may not have room in our budget to, to fund that. So that's how I'd answer that question.
Okay, can I bring to your attention then the needs of the people who are living downtown without cars or not driving, using that for their main transportation up and down the, the corridor?
Yeah, absolutely. That's very much appreciated. And then for those people, if they might be listening, MTD runs buses all along Anacapa and Chapala in both directions for that same length of service. So it's possible to, to also use other MTD services to replicate what the State Street shuttle provided, although you're correct, it is not on State Street.
Thank you. And now I'll vote two for the motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I believe we have a yes on that from Committee Member Silver.
Thank you. Thank you. So the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right.
Yes. Ms. Silver, if you just make sure that you, you mute yourself when you're finished talking. It looks like you are now, but we just need to make sure that we keep that off. Thank you.
All right. Love, love the ability to do this all virtually. It makes it so much easier. All right, we'll move to item number eight, please, Automated License Plate Recognition Update. Mr. Dayton?
Yeah, I would add to that, Mr. Chair, that one of the beautiful things about having us on Zoom is we are now televised. We're now, anyone can watch the meeting, which is really great, and at a much cheaper cost than we would if we were actually filming it and get parts. So that's really great to have more people participating. Okay, so item eight is our Automated License Plate Recognition Update. And, you know, just as a preamble of this, we have going at breakneck speed on responding to this pandemic, and at times coming up for air and going, what, where did the last year go? It really was a flash in terms of how hard we worked. Many of us have not had the opportunity to take vacation until we got to Christmas. There are, there's a considerable amount of, of stress in the organization. And so we have been trying to right the ship, as we've talked about. We've also talked about the airplane headed for the ground. How do we come up and make the system financially right again? And there's three options to do that, and I appreciated Committee Member France referencing one. There's three options essentially to righting the ship, and that is you either increase your parking fees to the customer. We can also reduce or eliminate the complimentary period, which is currently 75 minutes. In the past, it's been 90 minutes. Just incidentally, that the complimentary period is worth about $5 million that this organization is providing for complimentary parking to the public, which is a significant amount of expense. So you can, you can adjust three things. You can adjust the, the price of the parking, which is the hourly rate. You can reduce or eliminate the complimentary period, or you can reduce the costs of the system, that is the, the labor or the, the cost of providing the parking services. So in checking in with council members at the, at the time when we had been tightening the belt, if you will, there was really no appetite for raising fees or eliminating complimentary periods. So we have been focused on automation. I do want to note, as we talk about this and we put this in the memo, that we have an outstanding kiosketeer staff that have been, I would suggest, the face of downtown in many ways, a really great face, a happy face, something that shows what's right with, with downtown, and giving tourists in particular a information in the fly. And so the part of the, the challenge of this time is to transition from, from kiosketeers, not in the, in the booths, but trying to provide a similar high-touch type of service that is contactless in the pandemic realm. Our aim is not to, to eliminate any job from any person, and we won't be doing that. There's plenty of landing, running room to, to get people to transition into other jobs. And there's a lot of attrition in those jobs, too. People are leaving all the time and coming. So I just wanted to emphasize that. But now, as we've now set this course to retool the automation of downtown, we wanted to pause with you a bit and do some planning. Let's do some planning. Let's think about the end. Let's begin with the end of the mind, end in mind, as Covey, this is so often taught us before, before his, his death, and, and you know, let's look at the future. And so we have, if you just scroll down just a little bit, or scroll up, sorry, sorry. And by the way, Megan Salas is, go to purpose statement. That would probably be more helpful. Megan Salas is helping us in the background. So we thank you so much for her. It's just the beginning, top of the second page right there. Okay, if you blow that up a bit. So we want to, as staff, we are going to be meeting every single week. We have a team of rock stars in downtown parking who will be implementing this. And what we want to do is we want to, we want to share with you what we're, we're thinking is our purpose in this, you know, at the helm of the vision, what is our purpose? And then some vision targets we've developed. We had a lot of great brainstorming on this. And so we've aligned the vision targets in a first tier, kind of the higher order, or if you, you know, more of a 50,000-foot view, and then a second tier, maybe a little bit, still an overview, but a little bit more refined, maybe a 40,000-foot view. I just, we want to go over these with you as we begin the automation process and what it looks like. So we believe our, our purpose statement, and we're open to comments with you to help us shape this. We believe it is to ensure the financial sustainable parking system, a financially sustainable parking system that will support the vitality and health of the downtown. It's very reflective of your mission, and that's what we think it is. And then on terms of vision targets, where we're headed, where we want to end up, our, our first one, we will have an automation, we'll have automation fully operational in place by February 2022. So a year from now, we'll be, we'll be fully operational. That's our vision. We will begin to throw off $1 million annually. Once the strategy is, is fully operational, that depends on a lot of things. It really depends on COVID and, and coming back to some of the demand we're familiar with, but that's our target. We will have a safe and positive customer experience. That's always been our, our dream for downtown parking. We want to keep that, even though we're automated. We have a seamless and quick response, customer experience. We want customers to feel like we're still there. We haven't left, and now you're dealing with a machine. No, we still want to have a person and have individual customer service. We will have a financially sustainable operation. We will carry our, carry our, on our kiosk experience and reputation in other ways. In other words, we, we've earned a great reputation for our kiosketeers. We want to carry on that experience in, in other ways. Mr. Garza will tell you that that's exactly what we did with the ambassadors, is we brought the kiosketeer experience to State Street. We will have an excellent-looking and clean facilities. We will have state-of-the-art, reliable equipment. We'll have safe, contactless transactions upon exist, exiting the facilities. And then into our second tier, if you just move, thank you so much, Ms. Salas, kiosks will only be staffed for special events and unforeseen occurrences. So we will have staffing. We do believe we'll have staffing in the kiosks. We want to keep those kiosks. But it will be for special events and unforeseen circumstances. We will repurpose our existing staff to fulfill our new roles in the automated system. That's that transition I was talking about. We transition, anybody who's in a kiosk will be transitioned to other roles. We will minimize hands-on staffing needs for customers. So we will get, that's, that's where we get the savings. So we need to minimize those, but we still want to come in at the right moment. We will transform and upgrade the parking system. So we are hoping to see that it's transformative, and seamless. We will have a 24/7 revenue collection, which is a dream of this committee. We will only permit one complimentary period per day. That's kind of a new thing with the automation that we can do. And many, many of you may not have known this, but the municipal code only allows one complimentary period of 75 minutes per day. So if you go to another lot, we'll, and you've already used it, you won't get it in another lot. That, we think that that will really help people from moving from lot to lot, just stay parked once. We will only permit one, we will no longer be taking cash for payment in the future. Cash payment is, is labor-intensive. It's also machine-cost-intensive. In other words, the machines that cost, that take cash actually cost significant amounts, but we'll have other ways for people to pay cash. We will be accepting mobile pay, credit, debit cards, and prepaid cards instead of cash. So there's ways to pay cash, if you think in advance. We will work to minimize backups upon lot exiting. That's one of the, the things we're most concerned about with an automated system. We don't want to have backups for exiting that frustrates customers. We will have alternative payment options that are easy to understand, user-friendly, and supportive of people who, for unknown reasons, are unable to pay upon exiting. So, Mr. Chair and Committee Members, those are our vision statements and purpose statement for our effort as we move out. And, and we will continue to, this year, to check in with you. This team is, is all hands on deck. And, but we want you to, we want you to see these and shape these as we move forward. And Mr. Garza also, I'm just going to invite him on to, to give his flavor of, of this, because it's, you know, he's also a significant leader of this team and want to hear from him. Thanks, Mr. Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Just a couple of comments, mainly for the identification of the newer members. And, and the first thing is that the Automated License Recognition System was, was a part of our five-year financial plan that the Parking Committee approved back in January of 2019. And with that plan, we were going to be addressing the issue that, that Mr. Dayton and Sarah had pointed out, and that was the trend that was taking us from throwing off upwards of a million each year to, to just pretty much zeroing out. And, and that was, that was a huge concern for us. We saw that happening. And so that's why we developed this plan, to be able to assemble a, a list of strategies, cost-cutting measures, revenue-generating ideas, to be able to right the ship, to try to head off the, the, the trend that was happening, which was flattening and almost declining revenues and ever-increasing costs. And, and not just the minimum wage, but, but just everything, everything that was, that, that, that we were using to, on the expense side, to maintain the lots, from the cost of asphalt and concrete, and, and the cost of contractors, everything was going up, and our revenues were not keeping pace. So I wanted to say that. And then also that this license plate recognition system is, the, the implementation is, is in the works. We've got the policy already in place. We've got work being done at this moment to, to upgrade all the software and firmware and all of the, the parking facilities. That means servers, the computers, the columns, the, the credit card machines. Everything is being prepared so that when we come back next month and give you a more detailed explanation of the schedule for the rollout, everything is being prepared so that we're, we're shooting for maybe mid to late April. It could happen earlier, but next month, we'll give you a better breakdown of what that rollout's going to look like. So just, just a few bits of information there, and we're open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Comment, I would follow up, actually, kind of what you were just saying is, I mean, I see our vision target is to be by February 2022, to be fully operational and to give us updates. I think it would be helpful for our committee, maybe to come up, maybe, I don't want to say a Gantt chart, but a visual representation, maybe it's a map of our parking assets, and showing us maybe each month where we're at, or some other graphical way of saying, here we're at, and we are meeting our targets to get to that 2022, so we can quickly see, hey, we're getting there. We've had, we've got five lots with equipment, or just maybe a, a quick snapshot that we can look at each month. Here we are. The next month, we'll see the steps going forward, and that kind of thing. And I think it'll help us just, instead of words on a paper every time, you know, maybe some other visuals. So I'd appreciate that if staff gave them more work. I'm sorry, but maybe it's an easier way to, to do that.
No, absolutely, Mr. Chair. That is the plan. So we believe that at the March meeting, you will be, we will be giving you a schedule and a timeline of the various tasks, so you can see the, the rollout and what our plan is. We just want to make sure that we start on the best foot first. And we did want to pause a little bit to plan. Planning is so much, makes things go so much easier. And we also want to make sure you're on the same page with us. You might be thinking there's something that, that we're not, that's not up here. And, and then actually, Ms. Salas, if you could just scroll, I think, I think the word is up. I keep saying, just so that they can see that purpose statement. And we'll just start with that. And, and then if there's, we want to edit these or make any additions, Mr. Chair, we're, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. I'm going to recognize Mrs. Rocke. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple of questions, but I'll just start with this one. Will there be a new job for everyone who wants one? And if not, how many do you think, how many employees do you think we're going to lose over the next two or three years?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in typical operations with kiosketeers, we're in the 80, in the 80s. During the pandemic, we cut that in half. So first, every, everybody was eliminated. Every job was eliminated when the first shutdown last year. And then we brought back approx, in the 40s, in the 40-ish. And then with this process, we would anticipate we would go down to the 20s. So we would, if so, the, the finish line, and we'll have to work that out and see exactly what that looks like. This is, you know, we're in the midst of planning, but we think we'll be in the 20s with those same amount of people operating the automated system. But yes, no one will lose their job. They will be transitioned. Now, if some, someone leaves, which happens all the time, Committee Members are out there, people leave, and they come and go all the time, you know, that's what we anticipate attrition will, will solve the, the issue from, going from in the 40s down to the 20s.
Right. And then with the kiosk workers transitioning or getting new jobs, there's 13, I can't, I guess there's like 13 parking lots, and some parking lots have two kiosks, like, will there be people in the kiosk, or if we have only 20 staff and there's, you know, people are going to have days off, like, how's that going to work? I don't, is that enough people to handle every kiosk?
Well, yeah, so this is good that you're asking this question, Mr. Chair Committee Member Zerate. Yeah, so the intention is to not have any, any kiosketeer in the kiosk. So there, we will not, we'll have, we will have people roaming. We'll have, we'll have people in, in the lots. We'll have people monitoring via camera. But we will not have anyone in the kiosk. And unless, you see in that, I think it's the first, first bullet under the second tier, kiosks will only be staffed for special events or unforeseen circumstances. So there is an opportunity to do that. For instance, when we have a huge event that's flushing out, it, it may be great to have a kiosketeer in a kiosk or standing right next to a column, helping people get out fast, again, to meet our other goal, which is to not have backups. No one wants to experience a backup when they're, they've had a nice show and they want to get out of the facility. We, we want to facilitate them getting out fast.
Right, right. Okay, sounds good. And then another question, sorry, sorry, I'm taking, taking too much time. But what if I part, what if I partially use my 75 minutes for free? Say I take 30 minutes in one lot, and will it transfer over to the next lot? And now I only have, you know, 25 minutes or 15 minutes?
Oh, my gosh, that is such an excellent question. And I got to tell you, I don't think we've thought about that yet. Mr. Garza, have you thought about that?
That, that's a great question, Committee Members are out there. We'll have to We'll have to check with the, the SCADA folks to see if, if the, the system is smart enough to figure that out. Then we'll get back to you on that one.
And I think, I think our goal would be that you would get what the ordinance allows. So that is 75 minutes. So, but as Mr. Garza questions the, the capabilities of the system, that, that will be, it'll be dependent upon capability.
Right, okay, thank you. So sorry, actually, I will actually have one more question. I'm so sorry to cut you off, Barbara.
Go ahead.
Who's going to handle all this data? Will that be a brand-new job?
Ooh, interesting. Mr. Garza, what do you think about that?
What, what data are you talking about, Committee Members Zerate?
License plates, how long they've been in the lot? If they've been from one lot, did they go to another lot? Like, I'm assuming all this stuff will be collected on a computer somewhere? And it will be someone's job to file it and we'll have that information?
That, that's a great question, and it's not unlike what, what the, the computer system does now when, when, when we're checking on permits and we're checking on tickets, when, you know, how we, we are able to detect illegal tickets. The, the system's pretty darn sophisticated. So I'm pretty confident that, that that the system itself is going to be able to handle it without having somebody be looking at some monitor 24/7, because that's not what we do now.
Just a, a point of clarification for Mr. Zerate's question. This is before you joined the committee, but we did last year go through the process of adopting a policy on data retention for all city automated license plate recognition parking systems. So that policy prohibits us from retaining that data for more than 72 hours unless there are fees that are outstanding. So, so, so just, I want to be clear for you and for the public that the system does automatically capture that data, but we do not retain it in any way. So for privacy purposes, we don't keep that on file.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Are there any other members of the committee that have comments or questions on this item?
Well, I would like to ask a question if you can hear me now.
We can hear you, Barbara. Is there a chance that you can turn on your camera as well?
All right, am I there?
No, you're not showing up on your camera, but, but go ahead and ask your question, please.
Okay, I'm hitting share my webcam, but now am I? Okay, so I had two things that follow from the other discussion. If that is, it would be nice to have, I would appreciate having something about the, the 72 hours or the privacy issue that was, that's been discussed before about how these records will be kept and used. And my other question then is provision for handicapped users who now have an extended period and certainly can't be expected to do all their business from one lot. So in looking to see how, what, what the system can manage, how it will manage handicap users.
Okay, thank you for that, Madam Chair and Committee Member Silver. I'll ask Ms. Clark to send you the policy that Council approved. The, the data is eliminated, purged from the system after one day, so it's, it's pretty.
I, I know, but I would, I would like to see something actually here saying that that's part of our vision, that people's privacy will be respected by this, in this way.
Yeah, okay, so, so let's take a note, Ms. Solis. Let's add a vision target that we will abide by the City Council's LPR data policy and protect people's data information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Solis, and I'll, I'll just kind of clarify too. Last year, there was significant, probably a couple of meetings on this item where we did develop this exact issue where we are the, the policy to protect that data. So, but we'll add that to the vision.
I was aware of that, but I didn't see it articulated.
Very well, thank you.
Well, we're adding that, we're adding that based on your comment.
Thank you.
Great, Mr. Newkirk.
Member Silver is still my founder there, but I, I guess I would just follow. I think that should be a, a first-tier target, a vision target, banked out, so important. I would, I would say something like, we will ensure strict and consistent adherence to the city's automated license plate recognition policy. Could be a good way just to reference the policy that Council adopted. But I, I guess, just, I think that's a first tier. I think that's really important to, to keep on the front burner as we move forward.
Just, just, let's, let's wordsmith that a bit. Where did he go? He was right here. So I, what I had was, we will abide by City Council's LPR policy and protect our customers' data. Would you like to change that to something more strong you were suggesting, Committee Member Newkirk?
It's fine, I'm, I mean, I think abide is, whatever you guys are comfortable with. I don't think we need to labor it, I guess.
Okay, and then we will put this in the first tier.
Well, can we just revisit the wording from the City Council policy and use that same wording for consistency?
Well, actually, it's a, it's a very lengthy policy, so we're just looking for a sentence. But I suppose what we could do is we could look at the policy and see if there's any words we would emulate.
Thank you, that's my, that's my suggestion, not, not to draft it on the fly here, but have you take a look at what the language is already.
Okay.
Mr. Newkirk.
I, I guess, I, I, to your better, and I, I would have, I would suggest we keep it just a cross-reference to the policy, because it is, the 72-hour thing is one of, one of the important pieces, but I think it's, I would be uncomfortable trying to pick and choose what to incorporate. I think it's just simple to reference the policy just to make sure that's, we don't kind of lose track of that. So I guess, I guess, I don't know.
Take a look at it before you write it. I don't want to approve the, the language right here, right now.
Well, thank you, Ms. Solis, and I, I think that, that the goal here is, these are just vision statements and ideas. So it's, it's, this document is sort of a living, moving document. So I think at this time, letting staff know that we feel it's important that the privacy statements, so the privacy policy put forth and approved by the city in tier one, we want to make sure that that becomes a priority for us. So I think we just need to recognize it's a priority, and we'll let staff include that in the, in the, in the visioning targets.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other, any other comments from the committee? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Clark if she'd open up public comment, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. It looks like we do have one hand raised, so Barrett Reed, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Great conversation. I, I, this is Barrett Reed from the Planning Commission. I wanted to get maybe staff, Mr. Dayton, your, your commentary on the automated parking system, the procedure, how it may benefit or incentivize 24/7 residential permits. I'll, I'll be reporting on this meeting at Planning Commission this afternoon and would, would just love to, to brief the folks on this important improvement in the context of downtown housing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer that now or, or wait?
No, I, that, I, I think that included, concluded Mr. Reed's comment. So typically what we do is we can't comment, drag back to the public comment. But yes, Mr. Dayton, being that Mr. Reed is going to be reporting back out today at the Planning Commission, why don't you just highlight to him sort of the, our history and what the goals were of, of the LPR, how it helps that 24/7?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll do that. Thank you, Commissioner, Planning Commissioner Reed. So the, in, that is a great point on terms.
If I could stop for Mr. Dayton, someone has an open mic, if we can.
I think, yeah, I think, I think Mr. Reed might closes mic. So the, on the, on the issue of the, the residential permits, that is something the committee has been working on. And at their recommendation, we have put that into the fee resolution. Councils authorized that. It's a $250 a month fee, and really the only way to do that is through automation. And as Mr. Garza alluded to, we were headed to automation, so now we're getting there much faster. And the automation will in fact permit us to have those 24/7 permits for housing. The other thing I would just say too is that another avan, advantage of the, of the automation is that when our kiosketeers are not in the kiosk, we can still charge for parking. Right now, you could wait until, you know, till everyone's gone and leave and, and, and get a, get a free pass. So that is one of the aspects or advantages of the, of the, the automation.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, any other public speakers?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Well, thank you. At this time, I'll, I will close public comment. Unless there's any other significant comments from the committee, and we are getting near our typical ending time. If there's nothing else to add to this, I thank staff for this. And I, I sense that March will be bringing, again, a, a robust maybe schedule and planning on this. We thank you for it. We've been working with this for at least 18 months, and we're excited to see it starting to, to play out. So thank you. This time, we'll move on to item number nine, State Street Subcommittee. I'm just going to mention that I unfortunately was unable to attend the meeting. I had another conflict. It was an important meeting. I have reviewed a portion of the meeting, but I'm going to ask Mr. Dayton to report out on it. He was grossly involved with this, this meeting. And I meant that grossly meaning you were all encompassing, you had a lot to do, and a lot of effort was put into this. And on behalf of the community, I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just before I get into that, I, I just want to follow up. My staff is reminding me, and I, and I did send a text to Commissioner Reed that we do have the 24-hour permits available now. In fact, we have two who have signed up. So very good news. More people, please, we need, we need the revenue. So on the, on this item, State Street Subcommittee, the Subcommittee actually concluded their work. So I want to, I just want to put some bookends on that and tell you kind of where we set out and, and where we went. So you will remember, very similar to downtown parking story, you will remember that the Council has been discussing economic vitality and revitalization of downtown for about five years. They, they hired Cosmont, who did a detailed report about economic vitality. We had a land development audit to try to see what we could improve in land development response times to encourage people to develop. We've had the City Council change specific zoning requirements to incentivize development, one, one of which was, hey, you, you only have a parking maximum. You don't have to provide parking for each unit that you develop downtown. And, and I know Commissioner Reed was a part of that, and that part of the reason he was asking that question of us. And then, and then they hired an economic development manager. So we hired an economic development manager. We have been full-on serious about economic revitalization downtown. And then what happened? A pandemic hit. It sounds like a familiar story. And then, so, so the pandemic, just like with our budget process and the shifting of how we take in revenue, the pandemic has been an accelerant of the conversation for economic revival of downtown. Council sent the, the State Street Subcommittee and, and appointed them, and that's Council members Megan Harmon and Kristen Sneddon and Oscar Gutierrez, the three of them to talk about the future of State Street and to come up with a vision for that street. At the same time, the committee was also talking about things we shared with you about the Plaza, the, the Promenade. You, we've talked with you about how we've shifted with the Parklets and how we've evolved with the Parklets. There's actually now a visual guideline, an aesthetic guideline for the Parklets. It's brand new, it was released, I think it was last Friday. Staff, I think, is on version 29 of the guidelines. It's just amazing the work they've done. So we talked a lot about that. But in the area of vision, what they sent us to do, which, which is something that I will just call remarkable, and I have not seen in my 30 years here at the city, what they asked us to do was to interview, individually interview over 125 people that are the, make up the boards and commissions and the stakeholders that report to City Council and advise the Council on State Street or have something to do with State Street. So we set out on a very long process of two months interviewing those specific people, asking them three questions. Why, why now would we revitalize State Street? Is now the time? And then we asked if we redesigned the State, State Street, what would it look like? What would it feel like? What would be the purpose of doing that? And then finally, what role does State Street play in the revitalization of downtown? Well, we have 27 pages of notes, a pretty extensive conversation. And here's what I will tell you that is really exciting. The unity and repetitiveness of what people said again and again and again was, was very clear. In fact, I will tell you that the, the vision themes we did for Daily Gare Plaza, which we only interviewed nine people for Daily Gare Plaza, the vision themes encapsulated two pages of summary notes. For State Street Downtown, after interviewing over 125 people, the themes are, are fit very well and neatly on one page. It's pretty exciting. In Santa Barbara, we don't get that kind of, we generally don't get that kind of unanimity around a vision. And it was very clear that there was. So we took that back to the, to the Subcommittee in this last two meetings that we've had with them. And we suggested they were going to come up with a vision statement. And we suggested, you know what, there's so much clarity and it's only one page, easy to read. Why don't you just approve these as vision principles? So they did that. They said, they, they've recommended a council that, that the City Council adopt that one page of vision principles. And if you haven't seen those, we're happy to email them to you or you can go on the, the State Street Subcommittee's website and look at those. But I think they're very important for, for Santa Barbans to read. And I would even advise reading the notes on the interviews. I think they're also telling. And then the, so they made that recommendation, that Council adopt the vision principles. And then the second thing that they recommended to Council is that they direct staff to pursue the closure of downtown State Street to vehicles. Now, they didn't say from where to where. They said pursue the closure. So that is a circulation element revision, and it's, it's an ordinance revision. And we would imagine that would be capsulated or actually done some point at the end of the process when we have a design or a concept design in mind for the street. The third thing they recommended is that the staff identify actions and resources necessary for the development of a, of a State Street, downtown State Street master plan. Okay, so a couple of things. What would be those resources and what would be, what is a master plan? Well, a master plan is, it can be many, many different things, but it's, at its basis, it's a, it's a concept. It's a concept of the future. So that master plan will probably be, or they've outlined a space from the, the, from the freeway to Sola and from Anacapa to Chapala. And they're saying, we want you to look at housing, we want you to look at the street itself, we want you to look at the side streets, we want you to look at the parking. And they're saying, we want you to look at housing. We want you to look at the street itself. We want you to look at the side streets. We want you to look at the parking facilities. They've said, we want a concept for that area. And then and then they also want us to identify the resources needed to get there. Well, you know, it's not it's not anyone's side job. It's not going to be anyone's side job to do this. We're going to have to have staff resources and consultant resources to develop that master plan. And then finally, they want to establish a master plan advisory committee to guide the State Street downtown State Street master planning process. On that advisory committee, we've recommended there will be a downtown parking committee member, which they like that idea. We we believe that that will still happen. They added some members right now, the kind of loosely, two two council members, two planning commissioners, two HLC members, sorry, Historic Landmarks Commission members, someone from the downtown Santa Barbara, some someone from the Chamber of Commerce, someone from the property owners, someone from the access committee, someone from, hopefully, I'm not missing anybody. I think there's two more I might have missed. But so and and then I'll I'll finish there. I'll finish there, Mr. Chair, with you. So that 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 is the recommendation that we're taking to city council on March 9. More details to follow, and we will keep you keep you posted and and announce things as they come up. Mr. Chair.
So I wasn't trying to cut you off. I was trying to let you know that Transportation Circulation Committee was one of the other recommendations.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you so much.
I think they felt downtown parking knew a lot about it, but they didn't that we don't know every how the cars run around the area.
Even though we know you do.
They felt it was important. So thank you, Mr. Dayton. That was an excellent report out. And as I said, I did get to. And I encourage you, you know, you can go online and watch those that meet meeting and and stuff, and I'm excited that we do have the ability that they feel that it's important for downtown parking to be part of that, those solutions and those ideas and those visions. So thank you for doing that. I'm going to ask, because we are running short on time, but we do also have the opportunity to open up public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Penner. I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Well, Mr. Dayton, I thank you for that report. Are there any comments from the committee on this? Ms. Libery.
I just want to add that, at least for my part, I am so excited that this process is underway, and this is something that I think we've seen, you know, from various angles, the Parking Committee and other ways that the committee members have been engaged with downtown. You see it from from all of your other work that this is this has been, as as Mr. Dayton pointed out, kind of it predates the pandemic, and this is something that we've been thinking and talking about for a while. So to the degree that we, as the Parking Committee, can express some unified excitement about and support for the city actually taking action on on what continues to unfold, I would like to see us do that when appropriate. Certainly, they, I think, have asked us to share our kind of approval, but these things are going to take you know, a significant change like this is going to take the collective kind of support and and effort of a larger body to really let the decision makers know that we are supportive of change. And, you know, this is one of the hardest things is is to actually see change happen. And I just want to make up the point at this moment that to the committee and to any listening that, you know, it it's really going to require many of us stepping you know, out of our comfort zone and actually voicing support for the things that we think are really important. And if the the community doesn't voice that, and if we don't step up and and voice those both concerns and adamant support for various things that we like, you know, it's just oftentimes, these things just don't happen. So prepare yourself, you know, get ready and dig in. And let's, you know, let's really make the extra effort to let council know and to to spread a good word that, you know, change is going to require all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libery. Any other comments from the committee? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dayton, for that report out. And again, I just want to recognize the efforts that you've put into this Subcommittee. And I do want to note that all the members, the three council members who are on this Subcommittee expressed their great gratitude to you as well at that meeting. So thank you for that. I'd like to maybe just move quickly on announcements. I don't know. I just turned off my agenda here. I'd like to just get a quick update on, I mean, I think we've pretty much hit plaza issues here. I think maybe just a bike update is on the list there.
Yes, we have. We have two things. We had the State Street prominent activity and bike share, and we we can, if it's too late, we can just bring that back next time if you'd like.
Okay. Mr. Garza.
Well, I I just wanted to add real, real quick that before the shutdown, we were State Street activity was was increasing, then we got shut down. Now, the the activity, the excitement, the enthusiasm is starting to ramp up again. The streets are clean. We've got new structures being built. We've got expanded structure structures being expanded, all following the guidelines. Rob and I have been getting lots of calls from people wanting to invest more in their expanded dining areas. Now, the ambassadors are out there. We've got new and increased police presence, which is huge. And the best thing of all, we had two big storms, and none of the structures suffered any damage, no damage whatsoever anywhere. We were really excited about that. Okay, that's it.
Mr. Garza, no, don't go away yet, because I want to say, I'm sorry that I was looking to move away from that 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 discussion, and I forgot how important it was. Maybe it's because I've already talked to you about it and knew about the great results from the storms and a big storm at that.
Yeah.
And how successful things work downtown. So I apologize for thinking that that was something we shouldn't discuss today due to the time constraints, but it is important, as we are in the wintertime, to note that, and glad to hear that people taking opportunity to get back downtown. And these the area is getting reactivated, so we're excited about that. So thank you for all the things you've been involved with on that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I I think it would be appropriate, Mr. Dayton, if we just do bike share at the next meeting unless there is a pressing issue for us to know about it this time?
Not pressing.
Okay. Thank you. Are there? We'll move to item number 11 announcements. So do you have any announcements? Are you telling me I have to open up public comment?
I am, yes, for program announcements.
I didn't. I didn't know we had to do that, but I will open up public comment for item number 10.
And there are no hands raised.
All right. Thank you. Under announcements, I do not believe I have to open up public comment for announcements. So, all right. Are there any announcements?
No, Mr. Chair, we have no announcements.
All right. Well, thank you. I just know, Mr. Dayton, can you remind us of the date in which council meeting in March that the recommendations of the Subcommittee are going to the council?
We're shooting for March 9.
Okay, so just let the the committee record, you know, be aware of that day, keep it in. If you want to make any comments at the public comment, you're we're encouraged to do so, and hopefully, in support of what the Subcommittee has recommended to council. So we thank you for that. Without any other items on our agenda, that leads us to item number 12, which is adjournment. I thank you all for participating today. This is our second meeting for our two new committee members. I think you're getting the swing of it. Unfortunately, we're we're doing it this difficult way with technology. It's so much easier when we're in a room together, but we're we're making it through, and I thank staff for all the extra efforts on that. So with that, have a great rest of your week, and this is the committee signing off for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all.